Good evening. I'd like to call the special organizational meeting of the Pecosin School Board to order. It is now ten minutes to six o'clock on November the nineteenth. The purpose of this meeting is to reorganize the board and elect a chairman and vice chair. And so at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the office of chair.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Chris Burbage for chair, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Ms. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burp?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
I'll turn the meeting over to our chair.
Okay, the next order of business is we need to appoint vice chair to the school board. Can I get a motion to appoint a vice chair? I'd like to, can I get a motion? All right, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. DeBose as vice chair of the Pecosin School Board. Can I get a second?
Second.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Okay, all right. The next thing we need to do in the reorganization is we need to appoint new delegates for the Virginia School Board Association Convention, a chair and a vice chair. Do we need to vote on that, or is that just we appoint it?
You can appoint.
Okay. Typically, the school board chair and the vice chair sit on the VSBA convention, so Mr. DeBose and I will be functioning in that capacity. And then also, we need to reappoint or appoint someone new for the WHRO Board of Directors, and that's an appointment also?
You can make an appointment, and will you generally?
Okay. I'd like to appoint myself as the representative from the Pecosin City Public School Board to the WHRO Board of Directors. Can we get a vote for that? Ms. Carroll?
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Okay, all right. That will conclude the work session. We're going to take a quick I'd like to call the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four Pecosin City Public School School Board meeting to order. The first order of business, Mr. Lamaghi, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence and an inspiration?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for a moment of silence. Please be seated. For our inspirational quote, "It was on this day, one hundred and sixty-one years ago, that President Abraham Lincoln gave his famous address to the people at Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. The speech was only two minutes long, yet still resonates today as one of the most inspiring ever given. In short, its last lines are as follows: 'It is rather for us to be here dedicated to the great task remaining before us, that from these honored dead we take increased devotion to that cause for which they gave the last full measure of devotion; that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom; and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from the earth.'" Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
No, there are no additions or modifications.
Thank you. Ms. Purdy, for recognitions?
AJ, did you happen to take my paper? Did you happen to take my paper?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.[1370.01][1370.01](Laughter). I know our senior of the month well, but not that well by memory. So Chair Burbage, members of the board, community members and colleagues, thank you for joining us this evening. I have one special recognition, and that is our Pecosin Exchange Club Senior of the Month. So the November Senior of the Month is a dedicated student, a talented athlete, and a young man who understands the importance of giving back to his community. Academically, Thatcher has always challenged himself with numerous honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. His devotions to his studies have earned him an impressive four-point-four grade point average, and he's a proud member of the National Honor Society, Ro Kappa, and Spanish Honor Society, showcasing his commitment to academic excellence and leadership. Outside of the classroom, Mr. Fatchewski served as a school board representative and has also been a member of the Model UN and Distributive Education Clubs of America, which is also known as DECA, demonstrating his engagement in extracurricular activities that foster growth and collaboration. Thatcher is not only an outstanding student, but also a dedicated athlete. He has been a member of the varsity indoor and outdoor track team since his sophomore year, contributing significantly to his team's success. Additionally, he hopes to continue his participation this coming spring with the varsity soccer team, further showcasing his athletic talent and teamwork. Please help me in congratulating our student of the
Thatcher has asked if members of the board who served with him last year would like to come up and be in this picture. He would appreciate that.[1476.06][1476.06](Laughter).
And that concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Sum aside for presentations and reports. The instructional update.
All right. Good evening, members of the school board, superintendent, and fellow educators. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting the instructional updates, and we will be focusing on fine arts in Pecosin City Public Schools. So we're going to start with the primary school. We'll go through fine arts at each of our schools. Research shows that arts education enhances creativity, critical thinking, and problem solving, all of which contribute to a student's overall academic success. In addition to academic success, access to arts education supports students' self-expression, confidence, and emotional resilience. Our arts education fosters teamwork and collaboration while exposing students to various cultures and histories. As you can see, students at the primary school are working on a variety of skills in music and art. Students have been inspired by the works of Yayoi Kusama as part of their art studies, creating their own unique pumpkin designs. The photo in the top middle showcases an original piece by Kusama, while those whose distinctive style influenced our students' creative expressions. As you can see, they have created masterpieces of their own, showing their growing artistic talent, creativity, and imagination. Continuing on at the primary school, here we have students making prints using unconventional methods. This allows students to think outside of the box, explore new perspectives, and experiment with diverse materials and techniques. There's a lot to look forward to at the primary school, especially their visit from the middle school band and chorus in December, as well as various concerts and events. We cannot wait to share these special moments with all of you, so hopefully you can attend some of these upcoming events. Moving on to the elementary school, in fourth and fifth grade, they are learning to use the recorder and ukuleles. Introducing instruments at a young age provides a wealth of benefits, to include cognitive, social, and emotional development. Playing an instrument stimulates both hemispheres of the brain, enhancing connections that support complex thinking. Here we have our third grade students at the elementary school who showcase their talents with a heartfelt performance during the Veterans Day celebration, honoring local veterans, and highlighting their appreciation for those who have served. And to the right is an art classroom in action. We have our fourth graders performing their recorders, a rite of passage for any school-aged student. While the playing of hot cross buns brings back nostalgic memories, we must also recognize that access to music education leads to higher graduation rates and even college attendance. Now we're moving on to the middle school. As students progress to the secondary level, access to fine arts education broadens significantly. They can explore a wider range of opportunities, including concert band, stage band, jazz band, drama, and chorus. These programs play a crucial role in helping middle school students refine their skills and discover passions that may guide their future studies and careers. Additionally, participation in fine arts fosters transferable skills such as perseverance, attention to detail, and time management, essential attributes for success in any pathway that we may choose. In the performing arts course at the middle school, students demonstrated creativity and teamwork through an engaging project. Each student began by composing individual rhythmic pieces using music software, fostering personal expression and technical skills. They then collaborated in small groups to design a cohesive song, select lighting cues, and rehearse their performances. The project culminated in a vibrant stage presentation where students performed their rhythms live, showcasing their artistry and coordination in front of their peers. This hands-on experience combined technology, collaboration, and performance, empowering students to explore the multifaceted world of performing. The stage band set the tone for a festive Halloween morning, wish we could have had an invite for that, by performing thriller as students entered the building. The lively performance created an electric atmosphere, delighting both students and faculty. Safe to say, this musical treat was a major hit, leaving everyone with smiles. Safe to say, this musical treat was a major hit, leaving everyone with smiles. And there's nothing quite like the excitement of Friday Night Lights. The middle school concert band contributed to the energy and community spirit by performing during youth night at the Varsity Game, creating a memorable experience for everyone in attendance. Moments like these not only bring the community together, but also provide students with the opportunity to collaborate, fostering mutual respect and a deeper connection to our city. The middle school is excited to announce that 23 talented students have been selected for the District Eight Middle School Chorus. Those students will join fellow district chorus delegates for a special performance at Christopher Newport University on Saturday, December 15. This achievement builds on the school's outstanding musical tradition, as last year, PMS was honored with the prestigious Blue Ribbon Award, after both the chorus and band earned superior ratings from the Virginia Music Association. And our high school. As you can see, the course selections expand even further at the high school level, giving students the opportunity to pursue their interests and passions in greater depth. Programs that allow students to perform, create, or experience art foster a deeper understanding of themselves and others, helping them grow both personally and creatively. The high school marching band has had an outstanding season, earning top honors at several prestigious competitions. At the state marching band event, the band received a superior rating, showcasing their exceptional talent and dedication. Additionally, the band earned second place overall for music at the Williamsburg Classic, further demonstrating their excellence. At the War Hill Classic, they achieved multiple accolades, including Best General Effect Group, Best Music Group, and Second Place Band Group. These impressive results highlight the hard work, skill, and teamwork of our students in our program. We would be remiss not to acknowledge Mr. Doug Spruill, who will be retiring at the end of the year after an incredible 37 years of service to PCOsen High School and 40 years total in education. We are deeply grateful for educators like Doug, who have dedicated their careers to shaping the lives of students. His passion for teaching, unwavering commitment, and expertise have made a lasting impact on our school community. We thank him for the countless students he has inspired and the legacy of excellence he will leave behind. The art department has formed a valuable partnership with the Muscarrel Museum of Art for an exciting international communal quilt project. This collaborative initiative allows students to create pieces that will be displayed at PCOsen High School first, before being showcased at the Muscarrel Museum. The project offers students a unique opportunity to explore meaningful themes and contribute to a public art display, all while fostering creativity and community involvement. It's a wonderful example of how we are enriching our students' educational experience through meaningful artistic partnerships. The chorus program at the high school is preparing for an exciting spring with state assessments and show choir competitions taking place in March, offering our students a chance to showcase their talents and to compete at a high level. Additionally, the drama department is gearing up for the spring musical Bye Bye Birdie, which will be performed in May. This iconic production will highlight the hard work and dedication of our students, while providing a memorable cultural experience for the community. The high school is also excited to announce that they have 11 talented students who were also selected for the District Eight High School District Chorus. And finally, collectively, our students' artwork was displayed at the PCOsen Seafood Festival. And this event offered both students and staff an opportunity to celebrate their hard work, dedication, and artistic talent, while sharing their creativity with the community. It was a wonderful occasion to honor the achievements of our young artists and highlight the importance of arts in our schools. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Ms. Spence, the financial report, please.
Good evening, Chair Burbage, members of the school board and the community. In tonight's finance report, we will review the audit reports, discuss the fiscal year '24 carryover request, outline our proposed use of additional fiscal year '25 state revenue, and provide updates on the fiscal year '26 budget. At your desk, you should have the audit, the financial audit, as well as the activity fund audit. First, we'll discuss the financial audit. This audit was conducted by Brown Edwards. The school division is included as a component unit of the City of PCOsen's annual comprehensive financial report. As part of the audit, the auditor issued several reports, starting with the Report of Independent Auditor, which outlines the scope of the audit, as well as confirms that there were no significant findings. The compliance section of the audit includes the audit opinions, and I'm pleased to report that the auditor's opinion was unmodified for both the financial statements and the federal awards, which is the highest possible opinion. Furthermore, the school division had no material weaknesses, nor were any significant deficiencies identified. So it was a very good report. There is, as previously mentioned, an activity funds report, which pertains to funds held at the school level, managed by the principals. For these funds, the auditors review the year-end financial statements and conduct appropriate testing to ensure that the statements fairly present in all material respects: cash receipts, the cash dispersments, as well as the ending balances. The auditor's opinion was that the financial statements were accurate, which reflects positively on the management of the activity funds. In addition, you have received two audit communication letters regarding the activity funds. The first is a required letter that outlines the audit process. If there were any issues or findings during the engagement, they would be communicated in this letter, and there were none. The second letter reports on any type of internal control deficiencies that may have been observed. As you will see, no material weaknesses were identified. I do want to point out that on page two of this letter, there is a district-wide comment about segregation of duties, which is a common observation in many school divisions. Staff is somewhat limited. However, while we're a smaller division, we have controls in place to mitigate this risk, by principal signatures on dispersments and things of the like, and we are confident in the effectiveness of our oversight and review processes, as shown by having no material weaknesses. Overall, these are excellent audit reports, and I want to extend my congratulations and sincere thanks to the principals and bookkeepers, who all year long put in a lot of hard work and dedication in order to make this happen. We will review, next review, the superintendent's fiscal year '24 carryover request. At the end of fiscal year 2024, schools retained a balance of approximately $7.8,000 for the state tech grant match, along with excess funds totaling $2.7 million. As previously mentioned in prior board meetings, many school divisions faced difficulties in hiring staff last year, leading to substantial savings from unfilled vacancies, as occurred at the PCOsen City Public Schools. Additionally, there were significant operational savings that were achieved through conservative spending practices. According to Virginia State Regulations, school divisions are not permitted to retain excess local funds, and instead, the locality may reappropriate these funds. The superintendent is requesting that the city council allow the PCOsen City Public Schools to reappropriate the $2.7 million for the following items. There's quite a few community improvement plan projects. These plans, these projects are of $1.5 million, is to fund various projects, which is already in your approved PCOsen City Public Schools capital improvement plan. They include $50,000 for the elementary school gym floor resurfacing, $82,000 for the elementary school exterior painting, $800,000 for the middle school gym roof recover replacement, $95,000 for a phone system upgrade for the schools and city, $292,000 for bus replacements, and $215,000 for the high school parking lot resurfacing. In addition, we are requesting for $352,000 for curriculum and updates to be carried, excuse me, $352,000 to be carried forward for curricular updates and revisions to comply with the new Virginia Department of Education standards, as well as $700,000 for additional costs related to the PCOsen High School HVAC project that is scheduled to begin at the end of this fiscal year. We're asking for $35,000 for the purchase of a new vehicle for the Job Coach Program, $60,000 for additional weapon detection systems, as recommended by the school's safety committee, $24,000 for the purchase and installation of GPS software for all the school buses, and finally, $20,000 for renovations to the middle school interior courtyard. I think I will stop at this point and ask, do you have any questions?
I did have a question on the high school HVAC.
Yes.
Let's see here. So the CIP, is it the $3 million that we had originally budgeted?
Right.
This is just, cost has gone up?
Yes, it has gone up.
Okay, the scope of the work has not necessarily changed?
No.
This is just really what we think it's going to cost now?
Yes, mhm. We had new projected cost. Any other questions? Great, so I'm going to go on to fiscal year '25. As shared in prior school board meetings, the governor had not signed our fiscal year '25 state biennial budget at the time that we approved our fiscal year '25 budget. So upon the signing of the state budget in May, the school's projected fiscal year '25 state revenues for PCOsen City Public Schools is projected to increase by $560,000, which is based on 2038 ADM, which is the average daily membership. The proposed use of this additional state funding is shown in the following slides. First is the reduction of the city appropriation. It's proposed that we reduce the fiscal year '25 City of PCOsen appropriation by $280,090, which is 50% of the excess revenues. And then we will, the following, the remaining will be used for a bonus distribution. Provide one-time bonuses to all full and part-time employees. It would be $1,000 for your full-time employees and $500 for your part-time employees. The total cost of providing these bonuses is approximately $357,000. So to cover this expense, we're proposing that the school system will apply the remaining $280,000 of additional state funding, along with $77,000 from current fiscal year '25 vacancy savings, vacancy savings that has already been realized the first four months of the year. To be eligible for the bonus, it will be for only current full and part-time employees, as well as long-term substitutes working the entire school year. An hourly, daily substitute and supplemental employees would not be eligible, and the bonus would be issued December 10, 2024. An additional initiative to be funded through vacancy savings that has already been realized to date is the anticipated $32,000 cost of AP testing for all interested students. AP exams are an important way to prepare students for college-level work. Funding these tests encourages more students to challenge themselves academically and earn college credit, potentially saving on future tuition cost. In addition, by covering the cost, the schools ensure that all students, regardless of financial background, have equal access to advanced placement opportunities. Now on to fiscal year, before I go into, got a lot this evening in financial. I'm not usually up here this long. I'll stop here, and do we have anything for fiscal year '25 questions?
Just one comment, I guess. It's my understanding that for the bonuses, that the employees will be receiving the full $1,000 that the taxes.
That is correct. Mhm. We've been grossed, I grossed it up for the withheld taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that. Okay. All right, so on to fiscal year '26. Budget requests were received on November 7. It was quite a heavy load this year to do the planning tools on behalf, for the principals, and also for their staff, so I want to, you know, take a moment to thank everyone for all the hard work they did to get this over the finish line. Also, the compensation study. We should receive a draft of the compensation study from the Management Advisory Group within the next two weeks. Should know this plan will include market comparisons, as well as proposed updated pay plan for all staff with associated cost. And that concludes my presentation for this evening. Any other additional questions? Thank you very much.
Oh, I had a question, actually.
Yeah, sorry.
In regards to the compensation study?
Yes.
I assume we'll see that in, by, at the December meeting, or how long will that take to digest?
We'll receive the draft. We should be able to provide some type of update to see where we're landing in relation to the other, because we're doing the market comparisons. We may not have the proposed how to fund it right by then, but we'll have a feeling of where we are, and maybe potential implications for the fiscal year '26 budget. And that's, that's what we were trying to get.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to add that the main purpose of that comp study, after we've had a chance to pour through it, is to help inform the budget process for '26. So we're really looking forward to see what that study yields. It should be very informative about the things we've been saying anecdotally for some time now, to put real numbers to where we are as we compare to other school divisions around the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Ms. Spence.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, operational report.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent Tillot, staff, and community members. I'll present our operations updates. So first off, we did meet the first time with our safety committee last month. It's comprised of, you know, building admins, principals, SROs, SSOs, and our board member, Mr. Maxwell there. We had a lofty agenda for our first go, I thought. We did a lot, which was good, had a lot of homework, which I enjoyed. We went over a bus accident checklist. We had one of these based off our crisis management plan, and that's where we started. But we wanted to add some components to make it a stress-free document to kind of follow and a procedure to follow, so when they're in that tense situation, it says exactly who does what and when. There's no guesswork, it's simplified, and hopefully, in that instance, if it ever occurs, it'll help. So we did that. We started talking about the stadium at the middle school for safety, larger attended events like football games on Friday nights. The high school has already issued some more additional guidelines for the playoff games here with the no balls rules, to cut down on the games that's being played on the side. We've had a lot of people kind of get crashed into and balls hit heads and that kind of things, so we wanted to cut down on that first, and we will continue this discussion as we move forward, to try to make it an enjoyable, you know, space for everyone that's there to socialize and to watch the game. That's what it's all about. We're not here to step on any toes, but we definitely want everyone safe. This next slide will cover the, all the software and hardware, so I'll get back to that in a minute with the bus GPS, the tracker, and the stop-arm cameras. But we, I think Ms. Spence mentioned the weapon detection system. The security committee, or safety committee during that meeting, we decided not to try to outfit, you know, every school. We like the capabilities of the mobile systems, so we priced out those for the quotes, so we could share those between the schools and even take them to events if we so choose to do so, and train everyone on those. Past that, our next meeting is actually tomorrow, so. All right, transportation. So this is my home. So this is my homework from the safety committee meeting. I spent a lot of time talking to a lot of companies regarding GPS software and hardware, bus cameras, both the stop-arm and just interior and exterior cameras. I did land a company that gave us three. GPS is the trial for a thirty-day period for the GPS software with free hardware, no charge to us. It does not allow us to have the app access just yet, which is a good thing, because we need to get all our i's, you know, crossed and t's dotted there before we launch full go. But we will be able to track these three buses, starting hopefully this week if we get them installed. And it's not just about tracking the buses, it also plugs into the diagnostic port for the bus and gives a lot of that bus's diagnostic reports to us through a text and email immediately. So this is anything from the check engine lights, to the regen schedules, to anything that we wanted to see in real time. We can also have the bus driver data, you know, how many hours are they driving, how many times are they stopping, what's their speed, you know, all this data this GPS can capture. And there's also bells and whistles if we want to go further to tell how many times we open up the stop door and all this other stuff. So, sky's the limit. I'm excited, if you can't tell, to try these out for these thirty days and see what we can get. Same company offered the, a free trial period with their camera system, so they're gonna outfit one of our buses for free for an extended period of time to try out that software with them. And basically, you know, all of our buses right now have the old bus tape system. You gotta go to the bus, you're hoping you have the right spare, you're hoping that tape worked, and you know, everything doesn't always align with that system. The one that we're exploring is actually that cloud-based, virtually-stored system where you can actually tap into live feeds if you want it to, it'd be about a second delay, and then also retrieve, you know, previous data from the cloud at any time you'd want to, instead of having to go out and exchange those tapes. So I've got one other company on the line, trying to get a demo from them, but the other one has already sent a package for one of our school buses to trial. So very excited to see that. And as always, drivers needed. If you would like to apply, please come see me. But all jokes aside, we do have a driver in training right now with Mr. Lawrence, and also one sub in process of the HR process. So hopefully, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we'll get them rolling and see some improvement there. We also are toying around with some ideas I learned at a recent director's meeting. They're doing these kind of rodeos where they'll bring in whoever's interested into an open range with their trainer and kind of let them have a go with the bus. And the only stipulation is, is here's an application, fill it out. So we're kind of thinking about doing something similar, you know, to try to entice, you know, meet and greet, see the fleet, meet some of the drivers, definitely the trainer, see the schools, and hopefully attract them any way possible. So, you know, I may actually try that myself. All right, so the regional calendar committee met again last week. The new director at New Horizons, Dr. Kell, is leading that charge, and basically, it was just to catch back up, to see where we were as all the divisions that were present. And we are in align with what the region is doing by and large. There, I think there's two divisions that are kind of outliers this year, as far as when their start and end dates are gonna be. But everybody's kind of trying to get that first reading to their boards by January and have a February or March approval, and that's kind of what we're gonna try to aim to do here as well. So next month, this coming month, we're gonna be drafting our calendars and letting our principals and our staff council committees look those over, give their input, give it to you guys, you know, in that January meeting for that first reading, to start trying to get that approval by February. We don't anticipate any drastic changes. We're gonna try to keep those half-days in there, and like I said, outside of a couple of schools, we're pretty much aligned in the region with our start and stop days, spring breaks, winter breaks, and things of that nature. So we're looking pretty good for twenty-five, twenty-six. I think it's gonna be a different story that twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. There's a lot of school divisions looking to push to start earlier. So, you know, that's maybe when it gets a little wonky, but, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get to that. All right, food services. Every three years where we are contracted service, we have our contractor air mark. The Virginia Department of Education, they come and review us. So this review, you can see all the bullet points there. I mean, it's really just to make sure the right people are doing the right things, safety-wise, procedure-wise, sanitation-wise, and they look at everything. These bullets could have sub-bullets like you would not believe if I really expanded what they actually look at. So starting this month, actually, we'll have a phone call with the VDOE rep, and we'll start going over the process. But through December, we'll be submitting a lot of data for them to review, to make sure that we're in align. January, we're gonna have an onsite visit with one of the VDOE reps. They'll do a few mils observations and go through the middle school. I think that's the school they selected. And then that next day, they'll give us the exit meeting to tell us, you know, the findings, good, bad, or ugly, you know, here's, here's where you are. Prior to the review, they've already addressed, or asked us to address, two things that were needed, that they require, and that's in our policy, how do we take that delinquent debt that turns to bad debt? How do we address that? And that's in your, you know, reading files is the proposed way to do that. And then also, we didn't have anything that specifically stated anything about how or if we do allow adult staff, not students, charge mils. And to answer that question, we don't, we just didn't have it into the policy. So it's in there. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Now, probably the big-ticket item that I'm presenting tonight for you for the first time for the first reading is the draft cellphone-free education policy. So again, this was started due to the executive order thirty-three by the governor. He charged the Virginia Department of Education to meet with everybody across last summer. We intended some of those meetings and definitely joined in when we could. But basically, they charged the VDOE to create a guidance for every school division, public school division in Virginia, to create a cellphone-free bell-to-bell policy. And it has to be enacted by January one of twenty-twenty-five. So our cellphone committee, made up by parents, admin, staff, and students, worked hard using that guidance document, I can't stress that enough, from VDOE, to create the policy that's in your reading packet tonight. So basically, had two meetings, we sat down, we broke down into the grade levels, which was what the guidance kind of asked you to do to make sure it's age-appropriate, went through each little bullet that they had to make sure that we, you know, had everything as far as the executive order would require. When you look at it, it does include the definitions, which I think is really important, especially that bell-to-bell, you know, which does still include the lunchtimes and times between classes where, you know, that should still be the cellphone-free environment. So we also had our attorney looked at it, just to, you know, grab any recommendations that they may have, and we did do some adjustments there. And this committee will continue to meet, even though, you know, we've kind of give you the recommendation, but, you know, after, hopefully, we get this thing approved before January one, you know, these teachers are still gonna need some help with the enforcement and, you know, resources and things of that nature, and I think this is a good group to continue that type of work. And they were very excited to continue that. But past that, you have the draft policy for your review, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
I had a question, going back to the buses.
Sure, go ahead.
Jan, was plug, we need, we need more bus drivers. Do you have a status of the number of vacancies we currently have?
Yeah, I mean, we really could use at least four drivers and probably two more subs right now. You know, we continuously put out and advertised for that and never outed that we can. You know, at that director's meeting from the region, I mean, all our neighboring divisions were there, and the story was true around the room. And it was kind of crazy, the biggest division there that I won't name made a statement that they said that typically they get two or three, you know, applications per day, and they're lucky to get one a week now. And, you know, if that's the large divisions that pay, you know, what they can, and their, their well is running dry, you know, I could safely say it's across the board, because we're seeing it here as well.
You have a comparison of where our vacancies are from the start of the school year? A direction, or with status quo?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're pretty much status quo right now. We did have one driver that had changed back to part-time, just due to some family things, but we're still at the same number of drivers, you know, day-to-day that we have been. You know, the applications, like I said, we, we got the one-sub bus driver application in, and we're processing him pretty quickly to ensure some training quickly. Yep.
Kind of along the same bus vein, the twenty-four thousand dollars that was noted in the proposal, I guess, for some use of the carryover funds. Of those bus enhancements, the GPS, the stop-arm cameras, what is, what exactly is that twenty-four thousand dollars? Like, what would be more now with that money?
Right, so, and that could change. One of the companies that we're looking at actually uses the stop-arm cameras as a revenue source, meaning, you know, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine, I don't know if you've, hopefully you've never gotten one, but if you've ever gotten one. That's what it is, and that company can actually take some of those monies and apply it towards your bill. I think the quote was like a hundred-and-eighty-five a month per bus. You know, you get a couple of tickets there, you may be talking, you know, almost free there. So there could be some cost savings, but overall, that was kind of the quote that was given without that. And, you know, like, I've had at least two or three different companies, and they all have kind of the same things. We're just trying to zero in what we can use, and, you know, I told all of them, we don't have a huge staff. We need to make this easy, simple to the parents if we're gonna go to that app thing, as little movement as possible, you know, to make it correct and timely. So that's our goal to try to get with those softwares.
So really, it's more kind of the GPS tracking would be step one? You know, the stop-arm cameras may or may not be phase two, but more instantaneous with the twenty-four thousand is the bus tracking software and the app?
That's actually like the whole, whole package.
It is the whole package? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. And they do certain things, different companies and installments, but that would be like the total of the whole thing. Yep.
As far as the GPS, I know you're gonna trial three buses, I believe it was. I know the parents in the community would greatly appreciate an app, just, you know, if you're waiting for your child to get home in the afternoon and wondering where they're at. When would you anticipate possibly going live with that?
Sure, we got a thirty-day trial, and through that trial, we're trying to work out the kinks and see how, you know, how we would use it, because you can do it in different ways. So once we identify the kind of the route, and we can agree upon the funds and everything kind of checks the box, then we would probably have about a week or two where we would not release the app probably, but just make sure everything's working. I would hate to release something too quickly, and it becomes a mess, and then it's a bad taste in all of our mouths, and it just kind of doesn't work. So, you know, hopefully, sometime before the end of the year, we'll have this in function. Yep.
Well, the cellphone, the revision of the cellphone policy, the draft policy that we have in our packet, we're gonna discuss that later after consent agenda and the public comment?
Yes, it's, this is a presentation about the process, and then in your, in the packet, as you saw, was a reading file with the description of that background, and you'll have opportunity to discuss it before you approve the, and then again, all policies have a first reading, and then all you'll be approving tonight is to move it to second reading for approval in December.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Ms. Carroll, do we have any public comment?
Chair Burbage, we do not have any public comment today.
Okay. I guess we'll move along to the consent agenda.
I'd like to move to approve the consent and agenda. Items A through D is noted.
Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Carroll, can we have a vote?
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Vote passes seven-zero.
Okay, let's move on to item number eight, other matters for consideration. First item A is consideration of recommendation to amend the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget based on increase in state funding, as enclosed in our reading file. Can I get a motion to approve the recommenda, approve the amendment for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
These are the bonus, is correct.
Correct. Okay, Ms. Carroll, can we have a vote?
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Vote passes seven-zero.
Okay, the next item for consideration is item eight B. It's to revise student code of conduct to update electronic device and cellphone policy to align with VDOE guidelines and compliant with the governor's executive order thirty-three, cellphone-free education. Can I get a motion to approve the first reading of this policy?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I have a question. So if we approve the first reading, but we really would like to consider some amendments, some edits to this policy, does approving the first reading mean it goes forward without edits?
Good question. What typically happens, and that's the reason for a second reading, is it allows the board time to have discussion and look at the, you know, your interest in any amendments that you'd like to make. Now would really be the appropriate time during this discussion. You've got a motion and a second on the floor now. So now would be a good time to have this discussion, talk about any of those pieces, because that would allow staff time to vet the recommendations before you approve it. This particular policy has a date, so we have to have a policy in place that complies with the executive order by January first. So we really only have one more meeting in the second reading to approve. So it would be helpful for, for staff to have that discussion tonight, and any of those things that could be ironed out would be helpful. The last thing we want to do is make some edits that the attorneys haven't looked at and make sure we've, we've had that box checked, and that gives us time to do that before your approval, final approval, January, I mean, December seventeenth.
A follow-up question. Has the public seen this yet?
Yes, it's been public, like all of our documents, when we publish our agenda on Thursday, it's live for the, for the public. As well, yeah, it's been, it's been live since Thursday, well, through the weekend. As well, this particular policy, and it's not always this way, but we try to as best we can, when there's a policy edit, we try to involve the public as much as we can. And this particular policy has had as much public input as any I've seen, starting with a, a launch several months ago with the First Lady and the author of the book that really prompted the governor's movement here, Anxious Generation, and the excellent book, I recommend it. That initiated our committee work, and our committee work has had a lot of input from the community, including students. So I feel really good about the community involvement in this process, but I think it's important also to note with this particular policy, the guidance that, that comes from VDOE is very specific, as specific as any guidance I've, I've seen. And there, as our attorneys have said, there, it doesn't give a whole lot of wiggle room to stay within those tracks, especially based on the very definitive definitions that are prescribed there. So yes and no, but the work you could do tonight in advising any, any nuanced edits would be helpful.
I have a couple just points to bring up. I mean, just a preface, I have an eighth grader, he doesn't have a cellphone. I totally agree with the preface of this policy, especially being a college professor and dealing with that age group with phones, what they could do at the college level, too. But did we reach out to any other districts? I've seen others that identify instructional time, or at the high school level mostly, instructional time is the preface, or allowed at lunch or in-between bells. I mean, in a quick search, Loudoun County, Fakir County, Arlington, Spotsylvania, they all have recently passed policies this fall that say high school has those components. they all have recently passed policies this fall that say high school has those components. The Fakir article said that they've contacted the governor's offices and said that bill is, it's not binding, the bell-to-bell thing is not a binding part of the policy. So, it's, I mean, I don't take the word from the governor's office of that. But just how much thought in there, was that a component thought about? Reached out to any of those to see how that's going or any of that?
Yeah, I can answer some of that. I haven't done a thorough search of all 132 school divisions in the state, but we polled quite a few for our committee work of other school divisions. And our attorneys have advised in, and they represent quite a few school divisions as well in the state, that the wiggle room given is definitive. Bell-to-bell means bell in the morning, bell in the afternoon. And even in the language, it says bell-to-bell includes lunchtime and between class periods. So, if a community like Loudoun or some other school division has drafted a recent policy that doesn't have this language, bell-to-bell and including instructional time, which they're now describing as informal, informal instructional time, which is within that bell in the morning, bell in the afternoon. We pulled through this guidance all the way around to make sure that we weren't misinterpreting it, as did our attorneys. My guess would be if there is a current policy in place, they're doing the same thing we're doing in anticipation of a new policy that addresses this guidance, bell-to-bell, by January 1st. I would be very surprised, not to say that's, that I'm 100% certain, but very surprised if there was a school division in the Commonwealth that had any exceptions in their policy for the timeframe from bell-to-bell, allowing cellphones in the building anytime after the morning bell or before the evening bell. Again, I could do some more, more research in that, but our committee, I think, has done a really good job of vetting. We did pull all of the neighboring school divisions in the region and they're all, their policies are very similar to what you see here. And again, it was, we had a kind of a cheat sheet going in, which we don't always have. This, this guidance is very prescript.
This guidance was based off an executive order, correct?
It was based on, the, the executive order ordered the Virginia Department of Education to create these guidelines. And the order requires us to stay within the guidelines. That's where, that's where it becomes a requirement versus, versus just, as you'll remember, we've, if you've been on this board for a while, if you have, Dr. Goodell, we've, there have been model policies that have come down from the Virginia Department of Education that our attorneys have said are, you have autonomy whether to choose the model policy or not. An executive order doesn't really allow that autonomy, especially with these prescript guidelines, that what it means is bell-to-bell. So, that's our interpretation, that's our attorney's interpretation, that's our neighboring schools' divisions' interpretation. And the several school divisions that I have talked to, their superintendents are all either already have in place or are drafting as we are now in order to comply with the January 1 deadline to have a bell-to-bell policy in place.
I have a few comments. I know that from my experience in policy, education policy, that an overabundance of clarity is a good thing, including redundancy of statements. And the definitions will go with the policy, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. So, I have a few clarifying points that I feel could be stated, and I can send these. I mean, it's, it's really, I don't, I think I understand the intent of most of this policy. When I first read everything, it wasn't really clear to me that students are allowed to use their cellphones on their bus rides to and from school. So, daily bus rides, having something stated clearly would make students really happy.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I actually, along that same note, I do think it's relevant right now. The one thing I had noticed at the elementary and primary school level, our old policy, I believe stated, shall not have a cellphone or personal electronic communication device during the bell-to-bell school day. So, hard help, sorry, I'm on the wrong notes, here we go. None during, not during school hours or on the school bus. So, I did notice now at the elementary and primary school only, is what I was looking at. To your point, we do not have that language about the school bus in there anymore, and I wonder if we should since we did. I didn't know if that was intentional or what the thoughts were.
Those are very good questions, and I'll do my best. And Andrew, feel free to weigh in here, he facilitated those discussions. There were some specific interest in our three groups on our committee of, of interest for that grade level. And again, we were encouraged through the guidance to have those conversations so that they were age-appropriate. And, and back to our primary and elementary school current policy, we didn't allow cellphones, period. The new policy greater reflects the guidance that we went through and it used language like if a parent chooses for a child to bring a cellphone to school in, on the elementary level, only in the elementary guidance, if you read this guidance carefully. And our committee decided to follow that closely, which then allows for some of the concern we believed that the board reflected when you, y'all had the conversation, as you'll recall, a lot of conversation around smart watches. The purpose of that was not during school, because we require them to be powered off and in the cubbies or bookbags, but was, but more for what happens to perhaps a fifth grader who gets off of the bus by himself and, or herself and needs to get into some communication with the parents or even as a tracking device for the parents to know Johnny's home now. We believed from the committee work that that was not a bad idea. And since it was allowed for in the guidance, it was left in there. So, let's say, for example, a parent of a fifth grader decides they want to purchase a cellphone, could even be one of these phones that have very limited access, there are a lot of devices that do that, or a smart watch or what have you. Rather than get into specifics like the watch versus this other, these other devices, our policy is broad in general and allows a parent to make that decision. It just complies with the bell-to-bell. So, it doesn't create any of the distraction that we've had before. And it does, in fact, allow it on the bus, because it, the, the policy just says what you can't do. I hear the, the, the recommendation to be very specific in there about the buses. I would suggest that we not, only because it allows us to, to watch this happen over some time and see if this is creating any kind of problems or solutions on buses. I've had bus drivers tell me in the past, a cellphone's really good for a middle school kid. It keeps them busy and not as distracting to other people. I've had other bus drivers who hate them. So, the, the autonomy there, I think in this policy gives us administratively a lot of wiggle room. It doesn't actually forbid any use on the bus.
Follow up on that. So, point two, under the elementary and primary school cellphone-free education policy, the draft, about the parent, if the parent chooses to let their elementary-aged child have a phone, it's really clear in the guidelines that the exceptions where students with medical needs, certain needs for phones to track, that there, that there are permission slips or that documentation is in their IEP, and I understand that. But here, there isn't anything saying which parent, is there going to be a permission slip process? Or, I mean, where would be the documentation so that if someone sees a child with a phone, like a teacher or something, and, and asks them, and they go, my parent gave me permission, how?
Well, it, what, that's the other reason not to have it. Again, is it, we're, one of the other concerns about this that's been from the very beginning is not to overburden staff with an enforcement of new rules. We've heard that over and over again in the talking sessions that the state superintendent conducted around the state, Mr. Roberts and I attended one of those. And that was probably the lion's share of the conversation. Almost everybody there was, was a teacher or a school employee. And the feedback that was heard loud and clear was, we don't want to overburden our staff with another thing to enforce. And so, part of what this allows for is, the only obligation is to keep these out of the schools, bell-to-bell. I hate to keep saying bell-to-bell, I feel like I've said that a lot. But that was the real intent of this, and not to regulate how parents parent as far as the technology that they allow or don't allow their children to have. I personally, and this is, I probably shouldn't say this, I would not advise anybody to give a fifth grader a cellphone. I think this is a dangerous territory, and I can write a book about the horror stories that I have dealt with as a school administrator with kids misusing these tools. And I can't imagine a, a reason that a fifth grader would need one. But, I'm not the parent of that child, and I believe strongly in parents' rights and parent, a parent who needs a child to have this device for whatever reason, and it could be childcare after school, and I do understand that, would have the opportunity to have that device, but it would not be allowed to interrupt the school day, which is the purpose of this policy. It's not allowed bell-to-bell. It's silent on the, the bus if, in fact, a kid turns his cellphone on on the bus and then mom in her office can know that Johnny is on the bus on his way home by just looking at it. I have a 25-year-old and a 28-year-old, and I track them via their cellphones. So, I probably shouldn't say that either, but I do.
Now they know.
Oh, they know, because I say, I call them and say, why are you there? But anyway, a whole nother story. But I can certainly see why a parent of a, of a child in school may want to know where they are after or before school.
Don't forget the policy at the very end is very clear on the exemption.
Right, and I said that, I understand that part. Another concern I have is buses for a high school during our field trips. And the language in the draft policy does put the onus on, well, you don't use the word onus, you use discretion. That is, it says, when students are on school-sponsored trips during school hours, it is up to the discretion of school staff, and I'm assuming school staff on the bus.
Well, I, the, the intent of that was not necessarily to translate that to a staff member on the bus specifically, but more an administrative decision based on the dynamics of that particular trip. And there's a lot of reasons why there might be a need for kids to have access to their phones on some trips, but not others. So, what it does is it doesn't pigeonhole us into a, they are allowed or they're not allowed. It gives the autonomy again where it probably should be as an administrator in a school to say, this trip, we will notify parents, kids can have their cellphones and you can keep up with them. And that's probably going to be the case with most. But I could come up with several scenarios where a field trip may not be appropriate for kids to have electronic devices.
It would have been clear to me, I understand what you're saying now and I appreciate it. It would be, have been clearer to me had the language said discretion of school administration.
Very good point, and I think that's a clarification. Oh, that's something the attorney scratched. I didn't know that, but I, that was in the original that we submitted. I can get clarification, Dr. Bartlett, about that, because I would agree with you on that completely. That does clarify it, but there may be some reason that they give.
I think the rationale was, you know, if you label staff, admin would be the overarching call. But, you know, to someone who's trying to follow said rule, staff would have to extend to coaches to, to the people that are the boots on the ground, so you don't have to have an admin right there telling you.
I suppose what, y'all know that I'm, I'm a long-term educator, and I've been on a lot of field trips. And a lot of times, there'll be two buses. And if you have a teacher, and there will be a teacher, at least one, high school, you probably just can get by with one maybe instead of two. There, so one teacher on one bus could say, you know, I'm cool with cellphones, go ahead. And then on the other bus, you have an anti-cellphone person, it's like, oh heck no, over my dead body, or something like that. Then you've got, it's unfair. I mean, to the eyes of students, this is, this variability is what policy is supposed to control. So, that's, that's why, to me, this read that the school staff, the teachers running the field trip.
And I completely concur, having been on quite a few of those field trips myself. Consistency is an important piece of that. But the, the interpretation, or when I read it, I interpreted that means somebody, an administrator's going to make a decision about this particular trip.
For the all the buses on that trip.
For all the people going to do it. And then the people enforcing that are going to be whoever the adults are in charge. And I, it sounds like that's why they took out the, the language of administrator.
To wouldn't be on the bus.
So that it would, that administrator may not be on that bus or at, even on that trip. They could have had a, a coach is a good example. We send a lot of athletes off to competition. Now, those are scenarios where I'm certain they'll be allowed to take their cellphones. But the administrator would probably not be on, you know, a golf trip to.
Right.
Could we add a definition of staff?
We could, and that would be an easy thing to just add a definition in the thing that staff includes school personnel, and the decision would be made by administration. Or, we could, we could work on some language about that.
The question I had really, even while digging into the high school stuff, just because these become young adults, right? So, they have other responsibilities that don't have access to the school communication devices. So, what is your vision, say, needs ice cream, needs to get a hold of them, say, the ice cream machines out, not like McDonald's or anything like that, but that they, that they can't, they don't have to go to work today? Or, you know, can they call the front office and then they gotta go? Is it a phone chain? You talk about burdening the staff, I don't know, you know, I think they need clarity of like, how do I tackle this without a cellphone bell-to-bell?
Yeah, very, very good question. And that was addressed in all the conversations and probably one of the hottest topics for students around the state, as I've networked with my colleagues. What are you hearing from your conversations with your constituents about the cellphone policy? Communication to and from school becomes the topic. It's interesting to me because most of us sitting around this table were in schools long before cellphones. And you communicated with your employer, if need, or your employer got the message to you that the ice cream machine's not working. Parents communicated with schools and schools communicated with parents long before cellphones. And I think this policy, to just kind of cut to the chase on that, it puts us back in that place. We have protocols in place that have always been in place, just not utilized by particularly high school students. In elementary school, if my, if mom needs to get a hold of the kid, we don't, haven't allowed cellphones there ever, they call the school and the school gets a message to the child. And if the child needs to communicate with mom, he or she goes to the office and, and we give them a phone and let them call mom. So, those protocols have been in place and have really never gone away. They just have not been utilized on the high school level because they have their phone in their pocket. And now that that's not allowed in the Commonwealth at any school system, we're going back to those ways of, of communication. There is a sentence in the policy that covers that generically, that students must use school-based communication tools and platforms, whether in the office, classroom, or centralized location to communicate needs with parents. That could certainly be articulated with parents and others, you know, employers, whatever, if we wanted to go that route. I'm not sure we want to be, you know, opening that Pandora's box of, tell, you know, 700 students, tell their employers, call the school when you, you know, when you, for work-related question or concern. But I see where that's, you know, could happen. But there is language in the policy to address that we have means of communication and kids will have access to that throughout the day.
Their emails work?
Well, their emails do work, and our, our devices have email capability.
High school has the ability to message outside of our domain, but middle school below do not. But also, parents who are connected with their students and can, can also message.
And, and, but, but a clarification, even though, because high school does have email access and can communicate that way, just a reminder, our elementary, primary, and middle school have not been allowed to. have not been allowed to use their cellphones up until now, anyway, already. So in other words, this policy's not new to them.
All right, go ahead.
Sorry. Do you want to jump in?
Well, just along with what Artie said about these communication avenues that parents can use to, you know, when the cellphones go away, bell to bell, assuming once we get through the second reading, your staff is going to work on publicizing those technologies that we haven't used in 35 years?
Absolutely. And what I, you know, it's interesting, this is going to be a learning opportunity for all of us, staff and students, and how we're going to kind of go back to how we used to communicate in schools. And we will do the very, very best job we can in getting on the front end of that as we communicate that with kids and families. I'm envisioning a lot of announcements at the high school, reminding kids of, "This is how we do this and this is how we do that." I know that the staff at the high school does an incredible job of, in addition to daily announcements, if there's something going on, they're very used to, the administrative team will divide up the classrooms and they'll hit the, go through each classroom and say, "Hey, we're having this issue, this concern, we need your help with this." So I'm, I have complete faith in the teams there, that they will educate our students on this, these new expectations. And I think our kids, I'm certain our kids will rise to the occasion and learn how to do this communication in a different way, the way we all did back in our day. But, so the short answer is yes, we will do a timely and the best job we can in communicating the expectations. And then we're going to have to give a little bit of grace as kids learn how to do this. That's always smart business. I learned it a long time ago in public education, you educate folks on the expectation and then you give some grace in how they learn to, you know, to follow those rules. And then it becomes part of new business, part of the culture.
We just need to make sure that the parents also are, you know, this is geared towards students, but in an effort to help the parents be able to understand the process if they need to get in touch with their student.
Yeah, we've already started working on multi-levels of communication. The great news is we have a very effective tool with ParentSquare that parents are used to using and it communicates with them via a lot of, you know, opportunity, email, text, voice. We'll use all of that in this because this is kind of a very important transition as we educate folks to move in this direction. However, it's time-sensitive and we will be poised to launch that the day after you all approve it on the 18th of December, on the 17th of December. On the 18th, we will do a full court press of educating parents, students, the whole community. This is, and we'll do it in as effective way as we know how and we'll do it early and often.
So the last two, one's a question and one's a comment. The, in 2A under high school, I know we're really talking on the high school, but that's the biggest phone group. It says that students, in 2A, "Students are expected to store their devices in bags, lockers, vehicles, or in any other designated locations permitted by the school." So I had a few questions, like, "Will the school inform the students of this location?" I'm sure they will. And then about bags and, so at the elementary level, students really are not to have phones unless it's a parent exception.
Correct.
All right. Middle school, they can have them, but they absolutely have to be in their lockers.
That's correct. And let me mention this piece because it's pertinent. I would not have drafted it that way. I would have mimicked the middle school expectation with the high school expectation, bookbags, lockers. But the team that vetted this on the committee representing the middle schools were adamant about that they wanted them in the lockers. And Mr. Robertson, am I correct about that, representative, I don't want to misrepresent that. That was something they didn't want to get into, bookbags in the middle school with cellphones. So they wanted them in the lockers. The high school team, on the other hand, wanted to give choice. And I do think that's a smart thing as kids grow older. One student might say, "I would feel better about my device locked in my locker." Another one might feel better about it being in their bookbag.
Pocketbook.
Or pocketbook.
Purse, yeah, that's what I was saying.
Some other place that's, but it can't be on their person. So the question is, if they're going to have their purse with them.
You know they are.
I know. So that's why we didn't mention purse specifically, is because now a kid may, and I don't carry a purse, but a kid may put their phone in their purse and store it in their locker. That would be fine. But if it's on their person, it clearly violates the rule. It has to be away from their person.
So there's a dilemma for me. I mean, I understand, it's almost like choreographed vagueness to leave that so that you don't have to deal with it. And I'm like, that's, I would never not have my phone in my purse. Even as a high school, as a, I would not put my purse in my locker unless I'm in the gym.
Well, but just to clarify, the policy says away from their person.
So that means that no...
It's not debatable whether it's what you put it in. They don't, the policy gives several examples, or the, I should say, the guidance gives several examples of where you can let them and they leave it open as we did. Our team might decide there's some really cool places that we want to allow kids to store them, and I'll give you some examples. There are some school divisions that have piloted these kind of, yeah, little...
Shoe bags.
They're shoe bags, but there's an evolution to those. Now they have them that can be locked, kid can have a little key to it. So there's some opportunity and what we don't want to do is have to come back and change policy after policy after policy. We want the policy to be broad and general. I can write a regulation to support the policy anytime that will have more specific details like, schools can allow the little shoe holders in certain designated locations. There's just a lot of opportunity as this new thing in the Commonwealth evolves. We'll learn some things. The cost of those things are, they're like $18 a kid now. But that will come down, like all things do. And so, at some point, we may want to say, "Okay, these are two locations at the high school with these units in place. If you'd like to have one for your phone, here's how you sign up for it." And it gives us the opportunity to do that by that last part of the sentence and other places in the school. But they, and we thought about, and there was a lot of discussion about other things like, you know, what we used to call fanny packs and pocketbooks and other things that people may carry. We didn't want to get into the details of what they might decide because that could change tomorrow in the style. But the key to it is it must be away from their person.
So perhaps bolding the word "away."
Okay.
Would make it a little bit, because, I mean, because the...
It's confusing, especially the bags.
Yeah, that's the thing is, bookbag, lots of students don't leave their bag in their locker because they've got three classes really fast, back to back, and they gotta have all those books. So maybe, I don't know if they use electronic books or, so anyway, that was...
Yeah, and so we might have to, and Andrew, did you want to weigh in here on any of that from the conversations? I know you all had conversations about bookbags.
Yeah, no, you're pretty much spot on with what, you know, everybody was kind of struggling with, wrestling with in the committee meeting. And, you know, we had a lot of scenarios and, you know, at the end of the day, unfortunately, there's loopholes, you know, and anything that we create, there's going to be some loopholes. And I think that the best strategy that we determined in the committee is just to go with the guidance and then it's kind of one of those trial and errors to see, you know, how detailed we have to take it from point A to B. Because we kept on going down rabbit holes of, "Oh, they could do this," or "What if they go back to remember, you know, this, that, and the other?" You know, that's the caddies. You know, I'm glad that we stayed away from that system, meaning each classroom has like the old shoe holder, the caddies, because, you know, if you're going from class to class, that means that cellphone would be on their person, which you know they would be using it as soon as they touch it. So there's a lot of those discussions.
And that, as I understand, also was part of the enforcement piece, again, not trying to burden our instructional staff with another thing to enforce. If we're having them police, okay, they've got a pocketbook, is there a cellphone in there? Then it's getting a whole nother level of enforcement. So we're trying to avoid that and the policy reads away from their person, so...
So if we could bold away, just so that students know, this isn't wiggle here, you cannot have your cellphone in your pocketbook on your shoulder.
Very good point.
And that, and related to that, I also had the thought, on page six of the guidelines, fourth paragraph, fourth full paragraph, it says, "School divisions must be clear in protocols whether or not students can access their stored cellphone and/or personal electronic communication device during a school-based emergency, as in, God forbid, lockdown." But now that that's clear to me about this away business, then that means that during a lockdown, students will not have access.
Yeah, and we try, I think we tried to cover that in this language, but maybe we can beef it up a little bit. The language I'm talking about is that students must use school-based communication tools, platforms, to communicate with parents. So in an emergency, or not, they have to use our tools. And so that's where we said it. And again, it was vague intentionally so that it wasn't just for an emergency, but it includes an emergency. You're going to communicate with your parents, you have to use our tools, you can't use your own.
A lot of parents are going to be...
Oh, they are. It's going to be as much an adjustment for parents as it is for kids, I promise you that. I just admitted, I track my own kids, they're grown adults, so...
So the only, the last comment that I'll make is with our, with our policy as it stands now, not this draft policy, but our existing cellphone policy, there is language in the current policy that allows teachers to design instruction that uses cellphones.
Yes.
And I just want to put out there publicly that with this draft policy, and I believe it's, we can blame the executive order on this, and I'm happy that we can, because this is kind of sad, because any kind of instruction that involves GPS, as in geology, geography, there are just so many sciences. And not just sciences, because QR codes, you can't do that with a laptop, you can't do that with a Chromebook, I don't believe.
I think you can, yeah.
You have to pick the Chromebook up and you point the camera to the QR code. Okay. So that one, okay, you can make do, but GPS, can you use a Chromebook?
I think you can.
If we're on, yes, there are applications that will allow you to...
So no field, no fieldless, I'm just saying that this will preclude, the way this policy, the draft policy is written, teachers cannot employ cellphone technology instructionally.
And that is a valid point and was discussed and has been discussed and is an evolution in how this is, you know, in the tools that we use. The good thing for us, though, is when we, it was, you know, in our day, it was BYOD, Bring Your Own Device to School, you all educators will all remember this, and that was the prerunner to one-to-one computers. So we encourage kids, if you have a device at home, bring it and we'll then put groups of people together to share it and do these very cool projects as the use of technology evolved in our schools. We're way past that now. And the technology that we put in their hands now will do 95% of those projects that we used to have to have somebody bring one from school. And I remember the day when I would have two students that had, you know, a computer that would bring in and we would share them for a neat project. Now, we put one in every kid's hand and teach them how to use it and they teach us how to use them too. So I think we're in a good spot as far as not losing instruction based on this policy, not significant instruction.
That's it for me.
Yep. Very good questions and an excellent discussion.
I had a couple of questions, comments. I do want to, Dr. Bartlett's concerns with the definition of "away." To me, it also would make sense there to specify that those powered off in that way. I know we mentioned, but you know, the first initial reading of it, my takeaway, I can have it on and in my backpack and I would be in compliance.
No, it should, I thought it said powered off, but if it doesn't, that's an oversight.
It does further down, but...
Yeah, yeah.
In the definition, it doesn't, but another...
But we could add that back in each section to the language because that's a valid point. That is my understanding of it and I know it mentions it somewhere, but if it wasn't clear to you, we want to make it clear in here. So we will definitely have powered off.
Yeah. I would also add there, I mean, we give the example including in pockets. It makes sense to me, say, including personal bags as well.
That would cover a backpack that you're carrying from class.
Kind of going with that, you know, we discussed and basically established that students won't have access to their cellphones in the event of an emergency. Do we have, I'm envisioning a nightmare scenario here, but students have access to the school-based communication devices if they're in the hallways or common areas and not inside a classroom?
Short answer is no, we don't have phones in hallways, but we do have phones in every classroom and they're all voice-over IP networked phones.
So if there's a lockdown scenario and a student was traveling through the halls, what is the protocol for that student to communicate to emergency personnel that are locked out of a classroom and vulnerable?
Yeah, and we have a system in place for hallway clearing during a lockdown that's very thorough and practiced. And that is the protocol that is in place in every school in the country and advised versus, I don't, I've never read a security plan that says, "Break out your cellphone and do XYZ." So no safety plan that I know of leans on a cellphone for students to facilitate the safety needs of the school. So all of our protocols are in place and we have them in practice and during the lockdown, we have what's called SAMs, that's Special Area Managers, that, and a backup for each one, that during a lockdown, their first screening is check certain bathrooms, certain hallways. The goal is to make sure that all students, not just some students, are locked down in the event of a lockdown need. So very good point, but we have those protocols in place and none of them, and I've never read one that leans on an individual student's cellphone, to be a part of our safety plan.
And the last one, again, on the definitions, looking at the definition of cellphone, any personal device capable of making calls, transmitting pictures or video, or sending or receiving messages through electronic means, would this exclude tablets?
Yes, it would, it would. And our, if you, the whole first paragraph is, "You can only use the devices we give you. You can't use anything else." Yeah. Now, with the exception of kids with special needs that have, we have the exception in place for those devices, but we, you know, this is every electronic device that can do the things that the, the why of the policy is to prevent kids from being distracted from their learning by this device that has access to anything. Yeah, yeah. So that is, my understanding is that includes all electronic devices that have those capabilities. And again, the shift is, use the devices we give you for a variety of reasons. One, they have filters on them for their kids' protections, they can only do the things that we allow them to do with them until they learn how to work around it and then we have to learn how to stop that. But the short answer is, it's a twofold piece. It's to use the tools that we give them and have oversight over and not use the tools that are dangerous for their use, I should say. Good question.
On the personal electronic communication device definition, it mentions personal cellphone or headphones, laptops, tablets, and even other future personal electronic communication devices with the above characteristics. It sounds like it's all-inclusive.
Covering everything. Yeah. And it is designed to be, you know, next week, Apple could come out with a new device. And so it's designed to be all-inclusive so that it's not, we don't have to come back every time a newer device is invented and add it to our policy. Very good point.
Any other questions? Discussion?
I just... I just, sorry.
Go ahead.
I've asked more questions this time. I won't speak next month.
No, this is good stuff.
Uh, will we get a, a revised draft?
Yes, what, this is helpful, because what we can do now is we've taken notes, um, for all the suggestions. We will go back and, um, uh, make those adjustments. We'll certainly make sure that we're not missing anything with our attorneys, they'll give it another glance. Then we'll come back to you and we'll send that out in advance of the meeting, so you've all had a chance to chew on it. Um, and then we'll, uh, what we'll do is we'll bold those, so it'll be clear to you that they've been added. Um, and then you can call me, um, once you receive your packet and say, hey, this satisfies it or doesn't, you know, if you want to say this, there still needs to be some work. We can do some fine tuning on that even then. But the goal would be to come back in the December 17th and 17th meeting and have a document that, um, all, all seven of you can feel good about, and then we can get work on it the following day, because we've got a lot of work to do to advertise it. Very good question.
Any more discussion? Okay, here not, uh, Ms. Carroll, can we have a vote?
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Vote passes eight zero, seven zero.
Okay, the next item, uh, 8C is consideration of approval of superintendent's request to city council for use of carryover funds. Can I get a motion to approve superintendent's request?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I had a couple of questions or points. Um, I know carryover funds are nice to have, but I mean, I don't think that's, uh, I think also there's some bad things that come with that, right? So I mean, you're having, you know, bus drivers, teachers are taking on extra work, so I mean, it's, you know, it's a burden that we're placing on to get these funds. Um, I mean, Dr., um, we talked a little bit about it, but, you know, can you explain a little bit about the impetus to hire and fill some of these positions? I mean, I used to, like, beginning of the year, the summer, you see a lot of push, like, oh, hire, we need teachers, we need teachers. We still have, you know, four vacancies here, you know, I'm not seeing it in the same venues I'm seeing it, but I mean, I think the goal, no matter what, if we can find a, if we have a long-term sub in fourth grade, we need to find it, and we can find a teacher now, even if it's only for the last nine weeks, we should be filling that and trying to.
Absolutely.
Avoid having these funds, I mean, as nice as they are to have.
No, I can't add to what you just said. It is, um, uh, it's a full court press. From day one, when we get a position notice, we then, all hands on deck, trying to fill that position, and that never stops. Um, it's a lot of what, um, we do, it from Kelly Purdy's office, from Debbie Bunting's office and HR, uh, we go, a lot of the hiring, unfortunately, for schools happens in seasons. Statistically, we are able to hire very few teachers after the year has started. Most people who are licensed, certified teachers have jobs, especially in a national educator shortage, so the only, uh, generally, the only time we're able to recruit somebody after the year has started when, is when somebody has moved to the area. And we're very aggressive in trying to find military families who have been, um, uh, relocated to this area and we have, are able to hire someone there. But we, uh, we never stop the, the push to hire these positions. It's just our success rate of hiring after what we call the hiring season, which is generally over the summer, has passed, is, um, is slim, um, and it's that way everywhere. When I attend superintendent's meetings, um, it's always, uh, the, the primary topic of conversation is how are we going to, you know, fill these positions? The other thing that we are seeing, and this is just a total sidebar, and we haven't seen it yet in Pecosin, and I hope we don't, but several of our colleagues around the, the region are starting to see teachers leaving this early in the school year from burnout and, I mean, there's, there's a significant lift going on in the Commonwealth of Virginia with teachers based on the new curriculum and the pace at which we're having to keep up with this process. Four new curriculum in two years, including a new accountability and assessment program is unheard of in, in my career. Although I agree with all the things, it's just the pace is creating significant stress and strain on our, um, professional educators. So, um, I'll just quote one of my colleagues from a very large school division nearby, they lost 33 teachers in the first month of school, um, to, and the exit survey said, burnout, I can't, I can't do this job anymore. Now, I hate to say things like that, um, because that's very negative information. Fortunately, we haven't had that in Pecosin, um, in, in significance, but the strain is there. I talk to teachers continually who are, you know, it's hard work, it's important work, and the pace is overwhelming. So, um, all of that together is, um, to your point, Dr. Goodell, is a very valid point. We're going to keep pushing and always do. The challenge is hiring after the school year, it's just hard to find people who are willing to leave their position somewhere else and, and come work for us, unless there's an extenuating circumstance typically like a move, but, um, we are doing that. And as you said, uh, very accurately, the strain of covering this work with the absence of those positions is significant. And, um, so the vacancy savings, although it's nice to have and we have really good things to spend the money on, the way we get this money is not good at all. We want to fill every position and have no vacancy savings and slide in June the 30th with a, a zero budget, that's the goal. But very good point.
I just want to be very clear for like, I think all of us just to, you know, keep in mind is, you know, the carryover funds in, in essence, you know, we don't want them, just like we all just talked about, right? But having them, we need to take advantage of when we do have them, right? Otherwise, we lose the money.
That's right.
You know, so, you know, I, I, I don't want, at least in my opinion, you know, there to be a negative aura around carryover funds, you know, you know, if, when they come up, right? You know, um, the focus needs to be, um, you know, like, you know, Dr. Goodell said, you know, let's make sure that we have everything that we need from a school system standpoint, especially from an educator standpoint, um, you know, and if we're unable to fill those, then, you know, let's find other places to take advantage of those funds.
When, when is the reversion date?
Um, technically, the reversion date is June 30th. By general statute in Virginia, school systems can't retain any funds after June 30th. It goes back to, I think the language is your funding partner, which is your city or county. And then in some cases, I have heard horror stories where some cities or counties retain that money, spend it on other things, which they can do. We're so fortunate in Pecosin. Um, I don't know of a time that city council has not, uh, turned around and, um, honored our requests to reappropriate this money to other things that are valuable investments. And again, it's important to remember, these are one-time investments, because we don't intend to have this every year. We, the goal is, we don't want to have any, uh, carryover funds. But, um, when we do, it's wise to make good investments with this money, and I feel good about the ones we've chosen, because it does two things. It lets us get to, um, address some important investments that have come up recently, like the stuff on the safety committee and a few other things that we would not have access to that kind of money ordinarily at this time of the school year. But it also allows us to chip away at the CIP, because the CIP are, are long-term investments that are really needed, but unfortunately, the city has to keep moving those down the road, because we're dealing with limited, um, uh, resources. So, um, it allows us to partner with them. Um, I, uh, Mr. Wheeler and I, city manager, have had, been having conversations about carryover since we knew what the carryover was going to be, so that we could kind of work in tandem to make sure we're working together to facilitate the needs of the schools and also the capital improvement, which falls on the shoulders of city council to, to fund, because as you all well know, we don't get capital money from anywhere other than the city. So, yeah, good point.
I just want to clarify, potentially, could these carryover funds be used for a one-time signing bonus to try to, you know, encourage?
They could. I have a, an interesting philosophy about, uh, signing bonuses, and I'll, um, you know, defend this until the cows come home. Signing bonus is great, and you, when you hire a new employee, it slaps the face of your current employees, and I have found it to be a, a definite morale buster when you say to, I'm going to give you a new employee whom I don't know, um, X number of dollars for signing up, and I'm going to ignore the person that's been here doing the work for us for years. Um, I, as a school employee for many, many years, never appreciated signing bonuses, and I have heard that over and over and over again with my staff. So I will never support one, uh, it's certainly your prerogative, but I will never come to you for a signing bonus that I can't translate over to our current employees, especially like bus drivers, these people do this thing every day, and they've been in the, uh, in the trenches with us for years in very difficult times, flooding and, you know, the stuff that we deal with in, in this community and transporting our kids, that's, that's challenging. One of our bus drivers, uh, was wading through the water, um, on Friday, and Mr. Roberts picked him up so he could get here and transport kids to school. These are the kind of people we have, and I think they deserve, um, the bonuses that we can afford. So good point, though, but you can use this, we could apply to the city. Again, it's up to city council, they will be approved, if you all approve it tonight, they, uh, take this up on the ninth, their meeting on December the ninth, to approve it, uh, after your approval. Um, I have full confidence that they will approve this request, but, um, but it is a one-time thing, because it's, we can't count on it again next year.
So that, I guess the flip side to the signing bonus, it could also be offered in bonus for our existing.
Absolutely, and we have done that, um, every time. For example, this bonus that you all just approved, we call it, um, uh, signing and retention. It allows us to also use that $1,000 bonus to hire a new employee. Um, that is not, uh, as long as we hire them this year, that $1,000 would go as a, as a recruiting and retention tool.
I, I just want to add that, you know, I echo Dr. Goodell's sentiments about the, you know, the bus driver crisis that I feel, and anyone who's parent in the school system is feeling the heat of that, and if we have now that we can use, you know, even if we, everyone will be in favor of addressing it now instead of.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, just to speak to that, um, you know, we, we include, you know, just using our bus drivers, um, they are very important employees and they do incredible work. We're getting ready to learn in a couple of weeks from our comp study, what disportion our pay compensation is to other school divisions, and I think that's going to really inform our work moving forward with budget, where we can look specifically how far behind our, our compensations for, is our compensation for bus drivers in comparison to other school divisions? How will that look for our pair professionals? How does that look for our teachers in one to five years or six to 10 years? You know, we're going to get to really get in the weeds here and look with this study about where we are on the map, and then our, we all will have some very hard decisions about where do we put our money. A one-time bonus, um, you know, is great, and we want to do that, um, but I'm interested in looking at how we can recruit and retain long-term bus drivers, pairs, teachers, counselors, administrators, and the only way that's going to happen is to really look at this comprehensively, um, in comparison to our competition, um, for the best employees we can hire and retain. So very good point.
Just to echo that, it is something I think maybe we put on a work session specifically at bus drivers, you know, you hear different tales of what's going on, and either it's a run versus a field trip, or it's, uh, you know, consolidation or run or unfilled position, and they're taking on more work and removing it here when that maybe could have been spent there as a, you know, hey, you're picking up an extra 15 kids, maybe we can, you know, as nice as a $10,000 courtyard upgrade would be, no, no offense, Ms. Bunting, but I'll come help, but if that's money we could use there, then, you know, we could think about that, but I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to approve this, but I do think we need to look at that and not leave anything unturned, something we can fix this year, because you don't want six months of grudgingly tackling your work every day, because that grinds on you, and, and it might not come back next year.
Yeah.
We'll be facing with it, so if there's something we can do, definitely explore that in a work session.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. I think those are wise words, and, um, that's, uh, our goal is to recruit, grow and retain, you know, all, all of our employees, and, um, the, the bus drivers are, uh, an area we need to look at specifically. I agree with that.
Is there any more discussion?
Just one quick, uh, Artie, if you wouldn't mind, this is something I learned, and the members here may very well already know what a job coach program is, but I was very excited to learn what that was, I, for this new coach vehicle. Uh, and if, would you mind just to?
Be happy to. Kristin, I appreciate you calling and asking about it, because it is, it is something we're, um, very happy about. Uh, we, we have a, a program where we are able to coach, um, uh, and, and help train some of our students with special needs for employment after school. They do a, a variety of different tasks and experiences, and we have an employee that, that, um, coaches them and goes around from place to place, um, and they have to have transportation. So part of it is they're using an, an old van now that probably has, I don't know how many miles on it, it's been around a long time, and so this will be an opportunity for them to have a new vehicle to do their work, but they, um, they work out in, in various jobs and, and learn, uh, skills and jobs to be competitive, uh, after high school in their endeavor to be employed.
Yeah, and I think that's great, I just, I appreciate it for the, for the public and for me to kind of understand.
Great program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Uh, Ms. Carroll, can we have the vote?
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Okay, the last item under section eight, uh, is item D is the school nutrition policy update. Can I get a motion to approve the nutrition policy update?
So moved.
I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Uh, Ms. Carroll, the vote, please.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Okay, moving along to item nine, uh, communication and/or other matters by school board and/or superintendent. Uh, Mr. Omaghi?
For our school summaries, from the primary school, PPS wrapped up our first quarter with some celebrations. We had a glow party to acknowledge all the hard work of each of our students and staff in quarter one. Each class and their teachers came to the gym for a dance party with glow-in-the-dark decorations and glow sticks. Everyone had a great time, and we appreciate that all are coming to school ready to learn. We also held, held our storybook character parade. Students picked costumes that fit characters in some of their favorite books. We had everybody from Harry Potter to Disney princesses to Pete the Cat. We had a beautiful day, and we were so happy to have been able to be outside and that so many parents were able to join us. Thanks to Kelly Purdy for Facebook live streaming the event, allowing some deployed parents to join in from as far away as Saudi Arabia. In October, our first graders had two awesome opportunities for in-school field trips with the fire department and Jamestown Education outreach. This month, our IPOP students had a walking field trip to explore nature. If you head down PPS hallways in the coming days, you will find turkeys hiding out on the kindergarten hallway. You never know how creative our students out, uh, are when you, or when we see how they have disguised their turkeys. They have disguised themselves as Taylor Swift, a sheep, a peacock, and even a slice of pizza, just to name a few. They really don't want to be eaten for Thanksgiving. Our second grade hallways will soon be filled with habitat projects as students learn about several different habitats in the world, which tied in with their recent field trip to the Virginia Living Museum. Next week, our kindergarten students will be looking forward to their annual Thanksgiving feast. Of course, reading is very important at PPS, and so we have celebrated reading in many ways. ways. Thanks to PHS athletes who came to read to our students during Read Aloud to a Child Week. We are not sure who enjoys these days more, the PPS students or the PHS ones. We just wrapped up our PTO Read-a-thon. We had over 100 students participate and raised over $7,000. As of yesterday, the top class for reading minutes was Ms. Kraft's and the top earning class was Ms. Pedilla's class. During the Read-a-thon, PPS students read bedtime stories by some of our staff, thanks to Mrs. Jason, Senior Ramirez, Mrs. Zimmerman, Ms. Kraft, Mrs. Barna Miller, Ms. Young, Mrs. Barefoot, and Mrs. Inslee for tucking us in those weeks. Our PTO is wrapping up the Read-a-thon with an adventures and reading assembly this Friday. Thank you, PTO. On Thursday, the PHS Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy is bringing each first grader a new book and will be visiting with the Chick-fil-A cow. We continue to enjoy our Wednesday's word with Mrs. Green. Our most recent vocabulary words were thaw, as in cold turkey, patrolled in night owl and early bird, and slathered in lady pancake and sir French toast. What a way to build our vocabulary. Thanks again to Pecosin Education Foundation for providing Mrs. Green with a grant to purchase these wonderful new books she is sharing with our students and staff. Our PTO has helped to coordinate a food drive and we are so happy to be able to give back to those in our community who struggle with food needs at this time of year. The donation's coming in through Friday for Thanksgiving deliveries. There will be a celebration of the top donating classes in each grade level. As we fly towards the holidays, we wish everyone has a safe and happy Thanksgiving. We are grateful for all our parents and community does to support us. From the elementary school, Pecosin Elementary is thankful for many things in this season of Thanksgiving. We are thankful for our veterans as we hosted our Veterans Day breakfast for students and their veteran family members. We are thankful for the PHS brass band and chorus members who played and sang for our Veterans Day breakfast. We are also thankful for our music teacher, Ms. Ferris, and our third grade students who performed a patriotic-themed music program that honored all branches of our military. Our teachers and parents have been holding conferences to talk about student progress and we are grateful for the commitment of our teachers and families for our students' success. We are currently hosting our Fall Book Fair and are grateful for our librarian, Mrs. Wyndham, and our Spanish teacher, Mr. Ramirez, for hosting the family night this Thursday, November 21st. Thank you for supporting PES. We hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. And the middle school, elections for Student Council Association officers have been held and homeroom representatives have been elected for the 2024-2025 school year. SCA is now highly engaged at PMS. Our eighth grade students are looking forward to going on a field trip to Washington DC next Monday. Pecosin Middle School was awarded $1,037 in grants from the Pecosin Education Foundation. Their support is truly appreciated and makes such a difference. PMS is proud to announce that 23 of our students were selected for District 8 Middle School Chorus. These students will perform at CNU with the other district chorus delegates on Saturday, December 15th. PMS would also like to congratulate our November Golden Bull Students of the Month. Madden Forrest for sixth grade, Haley Roach for seventh grade, and J.J. Bryant for eighth grade. Our band and chorus students are busy preparing for our winter concerts in December. We hope you have the opportunity to come and enjoy the concerts and how their hard work is paying off. They sound fantastic. And finally, from the high school, PHS is thriving this fall with numerous achievements across academics, arts, and athletics. We are grateful to the PTO for their continued support of our teachers and their efforts, including the upcoming after-prom fundraiser with pop-up shops on November 30th at PHS. Model UN recently competed at the William &amp; Mary Conference and the Drama Department hosted its first-ever car show to raise funds for their upcoming production of Bye Bye Birdie. The marching band earned a superior rating at the state assessment, multiple awards at regional competitions, including second place for music at the Williamsburg Classic. In athletics, field hockey placed second at states, while competition cheer, volleyball, and cross-country all competed at the state level. Football continues its playoff run with a game this Friday at 7:00 PM and winter sports are gearing up to start soon. It's been an exciting and successful season for PHS. As always, check out the Island Times for upcoming information at PHS. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maxwell?
All right. I want to start, I guess, reporting on the committee meetings that I attended. I won't go too deep into it because Mr. Roberts gave us a pretty good summary of the safety committee meeting, but I wanted to thank Mr. Roberts for leading that committee. I want to thank all the school administrators, the SROs, and the SSF that attended. I think it was a really good discussion. Lots talked about, like you said, I think coming out of that first meeting, the progress we made for bus safety was a major win there. Statistically speaking, the most dangerous things we do with our kids on the school day is getting them on and off the bus. So I'm looking forward to see those implementations of what we discussed. Also, I attended the Gifted Education Advisory Committee. I want to thank everyone who came out and attended that. That was a great, great meeting. I know Kristin was there. Special thank you to Ms. Montalvo for leading that and also Mrs. Barton, the gifted education instructor at the primary school for giving us that special presentation recognizing gifted students versus what they call enhanced learners or, right? That was a very informative meeting. In addition to that, we had a good kind of workshop looking at policies from other school systems, both locally and similar school systems throughout the state and preparing for the revision to that policy. Thank you for that. Other thank yous, again, I want to thank the Senior of the Month, Mr. Thatcher F. Well, I'll stop there. Also want to thank all the art teachers in the school system, that presentation, fine arts in the school. It's great to see all the innovative and creative things that we're doing and in the various art forms that we're instilling in our students. I want to thank the finance team and the school leadership--
--for the financial audit with what looks like flying colors. So thank you. A special thank you to all the teachers that did the bedtime reading stories. It was a big hit in our household. It's all I had.
Thank you. Dr. Goodell?
Just want to congratulate Thatcher on his recognition, the fall sports teams as they're wrapping up and the winter sports teams as they're gearing up. The fine arts, the concerts and performances, you know, soak up those extracurriculars. The students are passionate about it. It's something they're doing extra beyond schools. At Pecosin, we're kind of blessed to have that many options for our students, being a small district. Students really appreciate it and I really appreciate time, effort, and, you know, money that goes into having to be able to offer that for our students. Their parents are appreciative.
Thank you. Dr. Bartlett?
Thanks. I had the opportunity to attend the meeting in the Woodside Lane campus for New Horizons and meet the new executive director who was mentioned during the operations report as heading up the calendar committee. Her name is Dr. Marsha Cale. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe Mr. Tillot was her seventh grade teacher, maybe? So that's really interesting to me. I'm sure she's got a lot of stories to tell about him.
I'm the superintendent in charge, so she better not tell those stories.
So that, we were really happy to get a full-time executive director. And they reported on their annual golf classic, which they have at Kiln Creek, and they, they raised money to help pay for competitions, industrial competitions and fees and that. $55,000 change was raised in one day at Kiln Creek. That was phenomenal. So, so that's my New Horizons. On November 15th, I had the pleasure of attending first playoff game in football where the John Marshall justices showed up and it was really uneven. It made me really proud to be from Pecosin. The result was 65 to 0. And I just wish the football team great good luck this Friday when they take on the Lunenburg Chargers. So, go team. Thanks.
Mr. Cloud?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things, thank you is mostly, first of all, to City Council for giving me this special opportunity to serve in this position on the school board. It's honor and I am very humbled to be serving each of you here. I also want to thank the former board chair, Shannon Martin, although I have to say I've not met her, but I know from reputation, from what I've heard and from what I've watched on many of the past school board meetings that she provided leadership and dedicated service to the board, of course, with a love for the schools that we have here in Pecosin. And I wish her the best. Also like to congratulate Chairman Burbage and Vice Chair DeBose on their election. Look forward to working with both of you and everyone here. Also, I want to thank the city manager, Wheeler, and his staff, as well as Superintendent Tillot and his staff, many are here today. They worked very hard and very quickly to transition me into this role and it was, it was passed last Tuesday, I believe, and Artie said, "We can try to get you in on this meeting." And so I'm very thankful to all the help I received with that. Just a seamless process and I'm very much looking forward to working with all of you. Echo some of the comments that have already been made. I too was very impressed with the arts presentation, being a former high school and middle school actually band member, percussion section. And then the marching band in the high school, it was one of the highlights of being in school. I just was very glad to see, as Kristin said, the variety of what's offered and to see it at the level it is is just great. And I'd like to compliment all the presentations given tonight. One of the things I told Artie that when we met first was how impressed I was with just the, the way that the presentations are done, the information it provides, the level in which it's provided, I think is great, not only for us, but especially for the citizens, for the public, those who are viewing. Also wanted to thank the cell phone committee for all of their work and Mr. Roberts, you also in particular, great work, staff, administrators, and parents and students. I think couldn't have put together a better committee. I was very encouraged by what you said, Mr. Roberts, about, that we're very interested in continuing that committee and based on what we've heard tonight and what we've discussed, I think that's going to be very important. Once it's approved and implemented, I think there will be a good, they will be a good committee to use for looking at how that's working and if, if things need to be changed. The last thing I think I wanted to mention, and again, this is maybe because I'm new, but I noticed we have in our packet the donations from individuals and businesses, and I can't find the list, I can't read them all, which is such a compliment to the folks in, in this city and just they're so generous and they love our schools and I'm just so grateful that they're willing to donate to, to all of it. And well, I guess finally, finally, just want to wish everyone, all of our folks throughout the schools and the citizens, very happy Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be grateful for and these schools are one of those most important. Thank you again.
Ms. Jones?
All right, I have a few things. Some are redundant, but I think it's for a good reason. A big congratulations to Thatcher. Thatcher was an outstanding school board representative to our board last year and I think we can all see from his extended resume presented tonight, an outstanding student all around. So I, and I know we all will look forward to following his bright future ahead. Wanted to extend a welcome to Mr. Cloud. We really look forward to working with you. And a personal thank you as well to Chair Martin. Really appreciate her service to our board. I personally appreciate her time and the personal discussions and insights shared with me over the past year. Ms. Spence and all of the finance department at the school board office, as well at the schools, thank you for all of the work on the activity fund audit. It is very commendable to have an activity fund audit with no findings. And that was my prior career life and can say you do not see that often at a lot of schools. So just wanted to reiterate how exceptional that really is. And I do know that Brown Edwards does a very thorough audit and so thank you to that team for their work as well. The cell phone committee, thank you for all of your time and the product that we have in front of us, I think is a solid one. Congratulations on all of our fall sports successes. Thank you so much for the presentation on the fine arts. I value that so much, so important in a well-rounded education and Pecosin just really excels in that area. So thank you for highlighting that this evening. And lastly, a thank you to the Pecosin Education Foundation for the grants that we've seen, also included on our donation list that you mentioned, and as well for another successful Run for the Bulls event. It is just so well done, not only from a fundraising perspective, it's just a nice event in our community. It brings a lot of people out and as always, it was just very well done. So wishing all a very happy Thanksgiving. I agree, we have very much to be thankful for.
Mr. DeBose?
So the cool thing about getting close to the end is I get to say, I echo everybody else's comments. But I do want to underscore the presentation about the arts in the schools, being a byproduct of that program, both from Spruill and a number of other individuals that are either still with us or not with us anymore. It is something that I hold very near and dear to my heart and, you know, I want to express an extreme thanks for everybody that does that and is part of that program, except for recorders. I heard the sweet, sweet sound of that a few days ago, emanating from my son's bedroom and it was, it was music to my ears, but I don't think the dogs appreciate it too much. But, but, you know, I joke, but, you know, it is amazing what the arts do for students. So, an extreme thanks for that. And like I said earlier, echoing everybody else's comments because we can't thank everybody else enough.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Thatcher, first of all. I really enjoyed working with him last year when he was our student representative. I also have spoken with him numerous times at science fairs and things like that. He is a bright young man and I look forward to seeing how far he goes. Thank you to Ms. Spence and all of her staff and all of the individual school staffs on the audit. That's to be commendable, that's to be commended. The cell phone committee, thank you for all your hard work on that. I know this is going to be sort of a, an abrupt societal change to sort of take these away from kids that have grown up with them, but I think it's the right thing to do because of all the negative implications of continued self-use, cell phone use, and social media. I also want to thank the work that was done by the safety committee on the weapons detection systems. I think that keeping our kids safe from some of these horrific things that we read about and hear about around the nation is, you know, we're, we're taking this seriously. So, thank you to the safety committee for all your hard work. And lastly, to all the folks that are the teachers and staff that are promoting the arts, whether it's in music and art. Arts are very important. It creates avenues for kids to express themselves. It has numerous benefits to development. I also want to thank all the parents, like myself, who are, have students with recorders that are at white belt and trying to go to black belt. It's, it's wonderful. I'm really enjoying it. So, thank you very much. That's, that's all I have.
Well, as Mr. DeBose said, it's, it's good to be last. I can say, I echo all of the sentiments that we've heard tonight, but I do want to take this opportunity to say a-- this opportunity to say a special thank you to, which I don't do publicly as often as I should, to our central staff that I have the pleasure to work with every day. They're extraordinary educators and, and very passionate about the work that they do. And I say this to my colleagues everywhere, you know, we're small but mighty, but part of that is everybody on this team has to do a, a job that's, would be five or six other people in a, in a larger school division. They wear a lot of hats, and they do it extraordinarily well every day. And so I'm just so thankful to be surrounded by these people, and as I'm getting ready to enter the, the season of Thanksgiving, I just want to take an opportunity to, to express how grateful I am to, to be a part of your team. Appreciate very much your, your hard work and, and dedication to the kids and families of Pecosin. I also, and I'm getting a little sentimental here, but I want to thank you all, the, the folks who serve on this board. The general public doesn't often realize the work that happens behind the scenes on the part of people who do this virtually for free. I think we pay you, what, $30 a month or something? Ridiculous. But you've heard tonight, the committees you serve on, the time and energy that you put in investing back into your community is, doesn't go unnoticed by me and, and our staff. So I want to thank you for, as, as our chief volunteers who do the heavy lift of, of governing our schools, and appreciate your hard work and due diligence very much.
Thank you, Artie. Ms. Carroll, do we have any other material for board review?
Chair Burbage, we do not have any other material for board review today.
Okay, thank you. The last thing that we're going to do is Item 11, Special Call for Closed Session. Where is the? I'd like to get a motion to move into closed session. Is this the right one? That's the wrong one. Motion for Closed Meetings pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. I move that this board go into closed meeting to consider assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board, or for discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment.
Second.
Can I get a vote?
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Cloud?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.